Okay, and he'll give us a heads up when we're ready. Fantastic. It's green? Good evening, folks. Welcome to our special board meeting. This is being held for the sole purpose of going through a personnel conversation in executive session about our CEO search. Thank you for being patient with us, and apologies for the delay. We've had a really long day. We've been at our board retreat. If I can have a motion to approve the agenda, we can...
So...
Second? Thank you. Without objection, moving on to member comments. We do not have any members registered or here, so we will move... If I can have a motion to move into executive session, please.
I'm sure my president moved to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters specifically in search of success or CEO.
Perfect.
Second?
Perfect. With hearing no objections, we move to executive session. Thank you, Christina.
Take this out. Not even a fraction.
And then these are the early stages of our very final model.
This is STEAM Team, our public art program that's now in existence for 10 years. This is the eighth version of a sculpture they will install on Lake Thoreau on the concrete spillway. Each year, the students design and challenge themselves to create an original work of art to put on display. The idea being to start a dialogue with the community. They have to go through all the rigors that a professional would have to go through.
Here you can see that our team just kept playing with the idea of the human form and specifically the silhouette of a face. And these were some prototypes of our final model.
The sculpture, like the framework for both the side faces, it's going to be framed with two by fours. And the outer layer is going to be mainly die on base.
So one side will represent the right side of the brain. It'll be geometric, white and black, more logical. While the other side will be the left brain, colorful, chaotically playful. The entire sculpture will also be tied down with aircraft cable as done in the five previous installations, so we'll know it'll be successful. Evening lights will also be hidden inside platform boxes to prevent view from the shore.
The project's called Cerebral, and right now, maybe you can see it looks like two faces facing the sky. The top triangle is the nose. There'll be an outline of the human head. The students have this concept of these humans looking skyward. And there'll be panels placed on this that will define the human head. That opening will remain open. There's two members that go between the structure to make it more structurally sound. Also, there'll be lights in there. Those lights will talk about the neuron activity, the synapsing in the brain that occurs in our perception. That's it, and just bring that right over. That's it. That's teamwork. There you go. There you go. This project and program is amazing because it puts students through the exercise of learning how to create something out of nothing. And it takes every aspect of STEAM: science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. If you want to bring something into existence, you need to be able to learn what needs to be done in order to produce something. And so it's a lot of questions and a lot of research and investigation. This is not only a wonderful work of art you get to enjoy on the lake, but it takes amazing learning and educational components for the students to be able to do something like this. We're excited about this brand-new project, Cerebral, from STEAM Team. Installation on the lake will probably take place last week of June or maybe first week of July.
Good morning. Welcome to the Reston Farmers Market, 25th year at the Lake Anne Village Center in Reston, Virginia. I am Fran Lovis. This is John Lovis. We're co-market managers with the Fairfax County Park Authority. We also have Keith Strange and Ann Strange working with us as co-market managers. And it's a beautiful Saturday to be out shopping at your local farmer's market.
People tend to think of farmers markets in terms of produce and orchard products. And we've got nine of the best in the world. And right now, it's all the leafy greens you can imagine, and radishes and asparagus. Meanwhile, we've got 22 other vendors: seafood, a wide selection of meats. You've got mushrooms. We've got three different bakeries. We've got all kinds of farm value-added products.
Well, I come out here very frequently, perhaps three or four times in the month, or certainly lots of times during the course of the season. And the reason is the freshness and the quality of the food that's offered. You have onions here, scallions. You have corrobey, beets, radishes. Well, the Reston Farmers Market is an institution that's been here for 25 years. The Reston Association was partly instrumental in its founding, along with Lovis's. And it is something that has become an institution in Reston and serves Reston very well over the last 25 years.
Cornerstone, the best charity in Northern Virginia, is here running a supplemental nutrition assistance program tent, which allows our lowest-income neighbors to eat at the farmer's market.
Our market is all local, all fresh, all of our vendors from 125 miles. And we also have a very walkable, bikeable, and even people come across the lake on boats. We have a big community that supports us every year, and we are very, very proud of our vendors and our customers. Thank you. Please come down and see all the wonderful things we have here.
Come be part of the market.
Hi, we're here at Lake Anne Plaza on the dock to announce the addition of 14 new boats to our rental fleet. We've got these new paddle boats you see here. These new paddle boats will also have shade awnings on them, so you don't have to worry about the sun while you're out there. These are our new single and tandem kayaks. Our hours of operation are going to be Friday, 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturdays and Sundays, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The last rental will go out one hour before closing. You're welcome to bring your fishing gear and try your luck out on the lake. Just please keep in mind, there is no swimming at any time. We look forward to you joining us here at Lake Anne Plaza. While enjoying all of the new boats, you can visit all of the shops and restaurants that are also here. Here at RA Boat Rentals, we also have group and private rentals available. Please contact RA Boat Rentals at reston.org for more information.
The Reston 2022 Recreation Passes are now on sale. There's something here for everyone. With 50 outdoor tennis courts, 24 lighted for night play, and four lighted pickleball courts, Reston Association offers one of the most extensive tennis programs in the Washington metropolitan area. Courts include youth 8 and under 36-foot courts, year-round hard-surface courts, clay-surface courts, hitting walls, and four dedicated pickleball courts. And if that wasn't enough, another benefit of having the RA Rec Pass is access to one of our pools nestled around this beautiful community. We have heated pools for early and late-season access, lap lanes, hot tubs, diving boards, spray parks, shaded picnic areas, not to mention water slides. Membership options include resident members and non-members, and we have guest pass options as well. Please visit reston.org and click on this link to find out more. The link is also available in the description section of this video. You can purchase your pass online and have them shipped to you for free. In-person pass sales are available Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 12,001 Sunrise Valley Drive, Reston. Get out and experience all that Reston has to offer. Make this year something special.
As we roll into warmer weather this spring, I know Restonians are eager to get out and take full advantage of Reston's lakes. Here are some things to remember if you'd like to use a boat in Reston. First of all, please remember, no swimming is permitted in Reston's lakes. So boats and paddleboards are the best way to explore and enjoy the water. If you plan on bringing a kayak, canoe, or any other kind of hand-carried boat, stand-up paddleboard to Reston's lakes this summer, be sure to register it with a one-time, free general access permit like this one. You can register for this permit by going to the member services desk or emailing watershed@reston.org. This permit is required and allows us to know who is using the lakes, helps us track down the owners of misplaced boats, and acts as an acknowledgement of the rules of Reston's lakes. If you live on Lake Audubon, Lake Anne, or here on Lake Thoreau, you might own a permanently moored boat like this one, docked on your own property or on that of your cluster. These are pontoon boats or deck boats, which are registered with RA and stay in the lakes year-round. These boats require an annual renewal, so the Reston Association knows whose boat is whose. If you have not renewed your permanently moored boats registration this year, make sure to head to WebTrack to purchase your permit and download the renewal form. If you'd like to register for a permanent mooring permit, please contact us at watershed@reston.org before purchasing your boat, so that RA staff can confirm your boat conforms to RA's rules. Every year, the Watershed team inspects the lakes in early summer to ensure that permanently moored boats comply with environmental, safety, and aesthetic standards. For instance, any boat in Reston permanently moored or hand-carried may only use electric motors. Gas motors are not permitted under any circumstance. For details on Reston's boat policies, check out our boat guide found on reston.org. This helpful tool details all kinds of useful information on the types of boats allowed in Reston's lakes and their specifications. And as always, if you have any questions, please reach out to the Watershed team at watershed@reston.org, or you can email me personally at broads@reston.org. See you on the lakes.
Hi, I'm Brian Khar. I'm the Environmental Resources Supervisor here at Reston Association, and today is Arbor Day. Here, we are at Barton Hill Soccer Field, where we are pulling invasive plants and then replanting with native seedlings. We have about 75 seedlings of red oak, red maple, and dogwood, and red bud. So once we pull out these invasive plants, we're going to be planting these seedlings into these natural buffers, essentially doing a reforestation for Arbor Day. When volunteers come, yeah, I think they do feel like they're making a difference by pulling the invasive plants, and it gives them the education about what and how and why we do this. Okay, so here, he has just pulled a bush honeysuckle. It's an invasive plant over from Asia. And these are highly invasive, and they take over our forest. So this is one of the most common invasive plants we have here in Reston. And we try and take out as many as we can through our different programs, such as Habitat Heroes and events like today, which is Arbor Day.
So this was easier than some of the ones that I just did earlier, but yeah, it was nice to do. I know that I'm helping the environment out.
Here at Barton Hill Rec Area, we have about 2025 volunteers. Over at the Browns Chapel site where Katie Shaw is working, she has about the same amount of volunteers.
Happy Arbor Day, Reston. I'm Katie Shaw from the Walker Nature Center, and we are thrilled to be celebrating 27 years as a Tree City USA. Today, we were joined by over 40 volunteers who came out onto our open space to plant trees. They helped us to remove invasive English ivy and honeysuckle. And everywhere where you see a white flag is where they put in a native seedling. We look forward to seeing the red oaks, the red maples, and the red buds grow and help our forests for years to come. Reston Association cares for over 700 acres of forests. If you'd like to learn more about our native trees, come by the nature center, join us for our program, or give us a call. We'd love to teach you about different species and how to care for your trees properly.
Hello, RA members. I am Cam Adams, the Director of Covenant's Administration at Reston Association. Spring is now upon us, and I hope you're enjoying the weather that's come our way. As we start to come out of hibernation and enjoy our wonderful neighborhoods, you might be looking to tackle those honey-do lists or address those projects that didn't quite make the cut before winter. Here are some frequently asked questions, which might be helpful to you this spring. I have a few projects I want to do on the outside of my house. What is the likelihood they would get approved? First, when in doubt, fill an application out. Second, the design guidelines are robust and can be difficult to navigate. So as we begin to improve that, contact your covenant advisor, so they can help direct you to the appropriate guideline for your project. Advisors are unable to provide guarantees for approval. However, they are the content experts on advising how to best prepare DRB application for review, should an application be required. Speaking of applications, here is another frequent question. My neighbor asked me to sign their application. What is an affected party, and should I check yes or no? An affected party refers to any owner of property subject to the RAD, who is materially impacted by the use or design of another property owner. If you'd like to participate in the review of the application and share concerns related to the project, you will check yes. If not, check no, but ultimately, the choice is yours. Please note, if you do support the project, typically, you would select no as an affected party. However, if you choose... However, if you choose yes, this means that an application must be reviewed by a panel. Speaking of panels, here's another question. I understand there are four review levels for applications, but I'm not sure what that means to me. Well, technically, there are five. Each design guideline illustrates what type of level of review your application requires. Those levels include: One, no application, meaning a member is not required to submit an application. Two, staff review, meaning a staff member can review the completed application and it is our quickest level of review. Three, consultation with a design review board member, meaning the application is reviewed by one DRB member with staff. Four, a panel review, meaning a three-person panel of the DRB reviews the application. And last, five, full design review board. The entire DRB reviews the application. And finally, what should be included in my application? The application has a robust checklist which aids staff in ensuring applications are complete. But generally, the following is a short list of standard supporting information for an application: a detailed description of the project, elevation photos, brochures, paint materials and selections, dimensions and renderings, a plat, and the required signatures. If you have more questions, please find us online. The link to the covenant section can be found in the description section of this video. Or you can call us at 703-435-6530.
There are two fox species that live in Fairfax County: the red and the gray fox. If you see a fox in Reston, chances are it's the more commonly found red fox as the gray fox prefers less populated areas. Hi, I'm Kelly McKenzie. I'm the Environmental Education Supervisor at the Walker Nature Center here in Reston. Today, I'd like to share a little bit more about these amazing animals. Red foxes are quite small, weighing up to 17 pounds and measuring two feet long from nose to tail. Gray foxes are even smaller at 7 to 10 pounds. Foxes have an excellent sense of hearing and can even hear mice digging underground or squeaking from 100 feet away. Their sense of smell is excellent, too. Foxes keep rodent populations in check, which is important since mice carry numerous diseases, including Lyme disease. Besides mice, foxes will hunt squirrels, birds, chipmunks, and other small animals. Gray foxes can even climb trees to catch their next meal. We are quickly approaching fox kit season. A kit or pup is a baby fox. By this time of year, foxes have established underground dens and will be giving birth to young in the coming weeks. These dens are only used to rear their babies, on average, four to six kits. Both parents participate in caring for their young. After about a month in the den, the babies are ready to venture out and explore close to the den. They spend much of their awake time playing and wrestling. After about six months or so, the male kits will venture off on their own. Sometimes, the females will stay and help to raise the next litter the following spring. Foxes don't pose a threat to humans though their calls, particularly during mating season, can be quite alarming. If you see a fox that is missing fur on its tail or body, the most likely culprit is mange, which is caused by a parasite that burrows into the skin. This is not an indicator of rabies. Observing a fox during the daytime does not mean the fox is rabid. Though primarily nocturnal, foxes have adapted to be more active during daylight hours, especially in suburban and urban areas. So how can we peacefully coexist with foxes? And what can we do to protect these adorable animals? Well, you can start by keeping garbage secured with tight-fitting lids. Don't use rodent poison. It can sicken or kill foxes and other predators that feed on the rodents. Secure pets or keep them indoors. Unfortunately, cats and dogs can disturb dens. Also, keep your dogs on a leash when walking through the forest. If you'd like to discourage foxes from making dens on your property, close off crawl spaces under sheds, porches, and decks before kit season begins. But it's important to make sure there aren't any foxes already there. If a fox family with kits has already made themselves at home, please consider allowing them to stay until the kits are old enough to move on with the parents. If you're as excited about these local neighbors, tune into the Walker Nature Center Fox Friday Post on Facebook and Instagram. I hope everyone enjoys the beauty of spring here in Reston. Take a walk through the woods and who knows, you just might see a red fox.
Hello, this is Larry Butler with the Reston Association. A new and substantial rezoning application has recently been submitted to Fairfax County for review. The development, called Commerce Metro Center, is roughly 16 acres and is located south of the Dulles Toll Road, west of Wheelie Avenue, and north of Sunrise Valley Drive. It includes the south entrance to the Wheelie Reston East Metro Station. Comstock, the developer of Reston Station and the currently under construction Reston Road District at Reston Station, has filed to make substantial changes to a rezoning that was approved in 2016. The site currently has approximately 565,000 square feet of office space in four buildings and surface parking lots. The current application includes keeping about 456,000 square feet in three existing buildings, removing one building, and adding close to 1.3 million square feet of new office space. It also includes up to 469 dwelling units, 163,000 square feet of hotel uses, 30,000 square feet of retail, and a standalone childcare facility. The removal of one office building, as reported in the applicant's statement of justification, is to improve circulation and to create a larger and more central urban park space in the retail area not far from the south metro entrance. This will be a long review process, and RA members are strongly encouraged to participate in the many meetings that will take place, especially those hosted by the developer and the Reston Planning and Zoning Committee. As new information becomes available, we will continue to keep you, our membership, informed as this application progresses. Thank you.
No problem. Yeah. Okay. If we have a motion, our votes are motioned.
Madam President, I move that the board certify that the only matters discussed in executive session were personal matters identified in the making of the motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Without objection, we stand adjourned. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, folks.
Thank you.